I would like to call this meeting to order. We will start with the roll call. Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Hairston?
Here.
We'll skip over Councilmember Little until she turns on her monitor. Councilmember Miniger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Vartan?
Present.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
For the record, we'll note that Councilmember has not yet joined, Councilmember Little, but we will, I'm sure she'll join us shortly. In the meantime, if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is to have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Dennison Harriel Jr. Pastor Harriel, would you please come forward? Thank you very much.
Happy New Year, dear Lord.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Let us pray. Eternal, Almighty, and Creator God, we invoke your presence and power here tonight. You have purposed our lives, and we thank you. Regardless of our race, economic class, gender, heritage, or occupation, we belong to you. We thank you for the faithful service of retiring councilman David Nadeau. We pray for him and the recently elected councilpersons Lisa Allen, Beth Little, Andy Miniger, and Gregory Vartan. Bless dear God, Mayor Nora Rades, all city councilpersons, and city governmental officials. Empower and enable them and the mayor to work together for the common good of everyone. We pray that the diversity of Summit is accepted, welcomed, and celebrated as a strength that will grow and blossom. Since we are all of one blood, help us to respect one another and ourselves as we serve this present age. Feel Mayor Rades, city councilpersons, officials, and the residents of this city with a spirit of kindness, love, justice, compassion, and peace that will enable us to walk hand in hand with each other. As we begin a new year in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic, remind us that even though a situation may be challenging and difficult, you are the God of eternal possibilities. Nothing is too hard for you because in your hand is the life of every living thing and the breath of every human being. We thank you for blessing this city in so many ways and for the gifts you have given to this governing body and to each of us. Loving God, help us to use these gifts to glorify you and be a blessing to others. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harriel. The next order of business, which is a very important piece of business, is to select our council president for 2022. So nominations are in order. Do I have any nominations?
Yes, Madam Clerk. I would like to nominate my dear friend and esteemed colleague, Marjorie Fox.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
And I second that nomination.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Council President Fox. Thank you. Please take your seat, and we're ready to go. And the floor is yours. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So our next order of business is to, let's see, the election of the 2022 president pro tem. Do I have any motion for the president pro tem? Actually, I'll do it. I would like to nominate my friend and colleague, Councilmember Greg Vartan. Do I have a second?
I second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now we are moving on to the State of the City address. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the 2022 Organization Meeting of Summit Common Council. Thank you for joining us, whether it is in council chambers, on YouTube, or Hometown TV. I want to welcome Commissioner Garcia Tengornados. Thank you so much for being here. I want to give my heartfelt congratulations to councilmembers Lisa Allen, Beth Little, and Greg Vartan on their reelections to council, and congratulations to Andy Miniger on his election to council, and my sincere congratulations to Councilmember Marjorie Fox on her reelection for a third term as council president. Council and I worked hard together in 2021, and I expect nothing less in 2022. Despite the divisiveness in our nation at large, members of council and I strive to find common ground and consensus on the issues facing our community. Although from time to time, we do not reach unanimity, there is great respect for the various points of view among your elected officials. Our role is to listen to the community, balancing the needs and concerns of residents and business owners with any governmental requirements. After careful deliberation, council and I make decisions that we believe are supported by and in the best interest of the community. As we all know, 2021 was yet another year of significant challenges. In the late summer and early fall, many of us felt optimistic that the pandemic was nearing its end. Unfortunately, the Omicron variant is rearing its ugly head, causing a spike in positive cases. Summit's monthly positive cases numbers ranged from a high of 263 in January of 2021 to a low of 16 in June. The number of positive confirmed cases in December topped more than 500. The Omicron variant is highly contagious, although symptoms are not as severe for most of those who are fully vaccinated. Fortunately, Overlook Medical Center has not experienced an overwhelming number of COVID hospitalizations. I encourage you to follow the CDC's recommendation to get vaccinated, wear a mask, indoor settings, and test when appropriate. I am incredibly proud of our staff and residents who have met these challenges, and because of our combined efforts in our city, we're in a strong position to continue to manage the pandemic. COVID-19 has brought us deep personal losses, financial reversals, educational and childcare challenges, not to mention the countless small disruptions to everyday life. I truly believe we are nearing the end of the pandemic as an increasing number of people get vaccinated and new treatments are approved by the FDA. As you know, children as young as five may now be vaccinated, and on Monday, the FDA authorized the first COVID-19 booster shot for teens aged 12 to 15. I would like to thank everyone who has done their part by getting vaccinated and boosted, wearing a mask, and getting tested before joining gatherings with family and friends. Your diligence is working. We are a strong community, and the continued support and generosity among residents, our business owners, and our terrific city staff make me genuinely hopeful for a healthier and productive 2022. The Summit Public Schools opened their doors to all students for a full day of classes in September, although masks are mandatory for all people in the school buildings. Everyone, including the students, were very happy to be back in their classrooms, learning with their peers. I want to applaud the students, parents, and teachers who had to adjust to remote learning and adapt to a challenging learning environment. So now I'd like to give you some updates, sort of state of the various departments in the community, and we have a lot that goes on in our town, so this may take a little while. I want to start with the Department of Community Programs, because I think in some ways, in the past year and a half to two years, they've been the heart of our community. When the city opened the renovated and expanded community center, we had great hopes that programs would reach residents across the city. In designing the building, we did not want just a second gym, but rather a community center for all. The Department of Community Programs continues to offer an extensive selection of special needs, sports, summer camp, and enrichment programs, and special events, including the Fourth of July celebration, that had a record number in attendance this past year. Another event that I am very proud to mention is the community Thanksgiving dinner. We held that for the first time this year, and with close to 300 meals prepared for those in need, people alone for the holiday, and for all first responders working that day, the gathering was a wonderful success. More than 120 volunteers helped during the special meal. All of this happened while still following COVID-19 guidelines. When I attended the meal, I was thrilled to see the elegant table settings, beautiful floral centerpieces, and dozens of placemats and decorations made by our schoolchildren. Over 60 of the volunteers were high schoolers. The atmosphere was warm and festive, and smiles were widespread. I am sure this is the first of many Thanksgiving dinners at the community center. When council, city staff, and I attended the ribbon cutting at the new community center in June of 2019, we were excited by possibilities for its use. Looking back, who would have guessed that the community center would be converted into a vaccination site? Since February 2021, close to 50,000 residents and non-residents have come into our building to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. In addition to the added traffic, DCP staff has handled well over 5,000 phone calls relaying information about vaccinations and helping people to get vaccinated. The staff was also responsible for coordinating and transporting Summit's wonderful seniors to the community center for their vaccinations. The Summit Family Aquatic Center and the municipal golf course generated record-breaking numbers in 2021. Both facilities eclipsed their highest total in revenue, memberships, and attendance. The aquatic center had over 1,800 members, with just over 48,000 coming through the gate this past summer, while the golf course had 1,550 members with nearly 16,000 rounds of golf played. The DCP team was able to resurface the investor track this past summer to the delight of many residents that walk and run daily on the track, along with the high school track program. By adding additional triple jump and pole vault runway and pits, the Summit High School Track Team will now be able to host larger events and competitions in the future. Capital projects underway for 2022 include a playgrounds master plan with options and price tags for Maybe, Tatlock, Brayton, and a new playground in East Summit, perhaps at the community center. Resurfacing will create new state-of-the-art basketball courts and memorial and tatlock fields sometime during the spring, and repairs will be made to the Wilson paddle and tennis courts. The DCP will also work on a master plan for the Wilson School Recreation Area. Finally, the showmobile that has hosted so many great special events over the past 20-plus years will be replaced, and I'm personally very glad about that, because every time I go up and down those stairs, I'm a wreck. So that makes me happy. The DCP received 81,000 in grants to cover a portion of these capital projects, and they have grant applications in, are still waiting to hear on a few others. I am very, very grateful to the staff of the Department of Community Programs for always striving to best support the Summit community with unceasing motivation and positive attitudes. Thank you. I'm also thrilled that so many residents and visitors spent time in Summit enjoying our downtown last year. Summit's very successful outdoor dining was a source of pleasure, in fact, freedom, for many of us in the summer and fall. Twenty-five restaurants participated in sidewalk cafes, which, due to an ordinance passed by council in late 2020, now allows for the operation of sidewalk cafes all year long. Also, 15 restaurants took part in additional outdoor dining options, whether by use of Parklets or the Maple Street closure. At the request of restaurant owners on Maple Street, as well as many, many residents, council in 2022 will consider the idea of permanently closing Maple Street. It is a very complicated issue, and we will do our due diligence, gathering feedback and information before any decision is made. Certainly, merchants, residents, and first responders will be consulted. According to several merchants, diners wander around town before and after their meals and take advantage of our shopping options. Obviously, Summit becoming an outdoor dining destination is good for our restaurants, as well as our business owners. Recently, the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association designated Downtown Summit as one of the great places in New Jersey, and I quote, "Downtown Summit has returned residents and visitors to the days when downtowns were the hub of the community, and the beauty, walkability, vitality, events, and mix of businesses are the reason Downtown Summit is worthy of a great place in New Jersey Award." I am grateful to every business owner and employee, shoppers and diners, and the hard-working leadership of Summit Downtown, Inc. I remain hopeful that a commitment to shopping local continues to grow after the pandemic is behind us. As we know, our downtown is not the only commercial area in Summit, and the Economic Development Advisory Committee has spent time focused on the Ashwood and Park Avenue areas in 2021, with plans to improve lighting and walkability. In 2022, the EDAC will focus on improving the marketing of the many wonderful businesses in that neighborhood. Summit Police Department. In 2021, the Summit Police Department saw the retirement of Chief Andrew Bartolotti after 22 years of service. Captain Zagorski was promoted to acting chief, allowing for promotions to the rank of Captain Peters, Lieutenant Tribber, and two Sergeants Erickson and Medina, and four new officers were also hired. The agency has been actively pursuing accreditation through the State Police Association, updating policies and procedures, rules, and regulations. Accreditation is a lengthy process and will be a significant professional achievement that enables the department to calculate and improve its overall performance. We expect to receive notification of accreditation early in 2022. The Police Department is the recipient of the 2021 AAA Community Traffic Safety Awards Program Gold Award for actions taken to create safer traffic environments for all roadway users in the Summit area. This award comes from AAA Northeast and reflects the ongoing commitment from the department to traffic safety. In addition to training implemented throughout the year, all sworn personnel received more than 30 hours of extensive training on de-escalation as part of the New Jersey State Attorney General's new Use of Force Policy Guidelines that will go into effect at the start of 2022. A goal for the department in 2021 that will continue into 2022 is to keep officers and civilian staff safe and healthy to provide uninterrupted service to the Summit community. In 2022, the department will continue to emphasize enhanced community engagement and work to reduce criminal activities in our neighborhoods through outreach, education, and active policing. Summit Fire Department. As many of you know, we recently broke ground on the new firehouse located on Broad Street between the Broad Street Garage and the Salerno-Dwayne showroom. The completion date is expected to be in the late spring of 2023. The architectural firm is Lemay, Erickson, and Wilcox, a group that specializes in firehouses, and Brahma Construction Corp. was awarded the bid for the construction project in the amount of $15 million. When the new firehouse is completed, the old building will be taken down. In fact, the process of taking down the building will be used as a training exercise for firefighters. The parcel of land housing the existing firehouse will be sold as part of the Broad Street West redevelopment process, allowing additional flexibility in negotiations with developers and significantly defraying the essential costs of the firehouse. As I said at this meeting last year, a new building is an absolute necessity, and this is one of those tough decisions that council and I are elected to shepherd our community through. I am confident that we will find the most cost-effective way to make this investment in our public safety. Aside from the increased size of the fire engine bays, key features of the new firehouse include decontamination areas and safety zones for firefighters within the building, training features incorporated into the building design, a dedicated fire prevention and education room, and a state-of-the-art emergency operations center for the city. Like we did when building the new community center, there are some features not included in the budget that will be secured through a fundraising campaign with residents and businesses. These items include a physical fitness and wellness room, ready room furniture for the firefighter's living room area, training props, and a dual-purpose fire prevention, education, and historical room. The total estimate of this private fundraising initiative is approximately $400,000. Shared services are often discussed and praised, but the actual implementation is quite complicated. I am happy to report that the Springfield Fire Department joined the automatic aid agreement with the Summit and Milburn Fire Departments. This agreement provides an extra engine company and valuable resources to respond to any report of smoke or fire within the three municipalities. In addition, Springfield's Fire Department and EMS squad joined the Mountain Valley Dishpat Center that also provides emergency communications for Milburn, New Providence, and Summit. The Fire Department updated the pre-incident planning for all commercial and business properties in 2021 in Summit. Pre-incident planning allows emergency responders to anticipate the resources and procedures needed to meet specific emergency demands within the city of Summit. The complexity of today's fires, suppression systems, and the changing building construction techniques make pre-incident planning imperative to ensure firefighter and public safety. 2021 saw the retirement of three longtime firefighters. We value their service, and we wish them all well. The Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. The Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad is a very dedicated team of members that help the community by covering 911 calls and by filling administrative and operations positions within the organization. They not only respond to emergencies, but also ferry residents to doctor visits when necessary. The last two years have been quite a challenge for our volunteer squad members, and we owe them an enormous debt of gratitude, just for some perspective regarding their activity. In the entire year of 2019, the squad responded to 1,957 calls, provided coverage to 35 standbys, and 101 mutual aid calls. During 2020, the squad responded to 1,700 calls and provided coverage for 16 standbys and 80 mutual aid calls. The drop in the number of calls during 2020 was almost certainly due to COVID, as hospitals saw a steep decline in visits after the initial surge. Many people were afraid to access treatment at a hospital. That changed in 2021 and is reflected in the number of calls received. From January 1st to December 28th, the Volunteer First Aid Squad covered nearly 2,200 calls and provided coverage for 28 standbys and 163 mutual aid calls to other towns. Standbys are events where the presence of the squad is very valuable, from football games, high school graduations, Stoke strips, Halloween parades, Easter egg hunts, the annual turkey drive, the Special Olympics torch run, the Fourth of July fireworks, and many, many more. We are grateful to all of these phenomenal volunteers, and I hope, urge the community to continue to support them. Fiscal Health. I am happy to report that the fiscal condition of the city is very strong. As the city budget is only about 20% of the total tax levy, this council and city staff have taken several actions to ensure that services have continued without interruption. In 2020 and 2021 collectively, the city secured $854,000 in CARES Act funds from Union County to assist with unforeseen citywide pandemic expenses. In 2021, the city received its first tranche of American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of $1.14 million. The second tranche is expected in 2022. These funds will continue to be reused in the operating budget as a source of revenue, much-needed revenue. In 2021, Summit applied for FEMA reimbursement for additional pandemic expenses in the amount of $117,000, and we are awaiting confirmation of that payment. The 2021 Summit municipal budget was $64.26 million, down 0.41% from 2020. Council has begun to work on the 2022 budget with the express intention of keeping any potential increase at a minimum. We face many pressures on our budget, not least of which are increasing demands for capital projects. All of us want the city to be in the best possible condition, but we must maintain a long-term vision for the health of the city's infrastructure and prioritize capital projects. And while this may seem mundane, in 2020, the city of Summit received no recommendations in its annual audit, and believe me, that's quite unusual. This is truly a strong indication of a very well-run city. As I have said before, we are fortunate to have a strong residential ratable base that has shown positive incremental growth in recent years. The tax base increased by $28 million in 2021, and we expect the 2022 tax base to increase by approximately $37 million. But frankly, that is not enough to avoid tax increases while delivering world-class services that we have all come to expect from the city. Increased ratables, both residential and commercial, are a crucial component in a healthy city budget. Our largest commercial owner, Bristol Myers Squibb, is renovating facilities on its west campus. When completed, hopefully later this year, the project will improve the campus and increase the commercial valuation of the property. The Broad Street West Redevelopment Project. In 2021, council and I worked diligently on the Broad Street West Redevelopment Agreement with our planning professionals, the steering committee, city staff, and the redevelopers, which is a consortium of L&amp;M and Toll Brothers. Progress was slower than we would have liked because of prolonged financial negotiations with the developer. Councilmembers and I were determined to get the best deal possible for the taxpayers of Summit. There was a great deal of back and forth over land acquisition costs, as well as on future payments to be made to the city. I am confident that we will have a signed redevelopment agreement by the middle of 2022. The agreement will detail specifics on the buildings to be constructed, including the amount developers will pay for the city-owned property, a timetable for construction and phasing, sustainable design elements, penalties for missing deadlines, and more. The agreement will also include an escrow account established by the redeveloper with funds to be paid to city professionals during the planning phase. Phase 1 of Broad Street West redevelopment will be located where the existing firehouse stands and will include up to 140 rental units, mostly one- and two-bedroom units, with a few three-bedroom units. Approximately 21 will be affordable housing, seven at workforce-level pricing, and the rest at market rate. Council intends to have a public meeting in the early part of 2022 to inform the public more fully. I know the progress seems slow, however, this is a very complicated project, and we want to be sure to get it right. Furthermore, construction on the rental units cannot begin until the new firehouse is built and the old one demolished. We are fortunate to be positioned to take advantage of this opportunity for redevelopment of an underutilized part of our town at no cost to taxpayers and with the future benefit of an increased tax base. This crucial project will provide value not just for current residents, but for future generations of Summit. The pandemic has been a blow to our normal rhythms of life, but if anything, it should reinforce the importance to our quality of life in protecting and improving our downtown. We love our movie nights and concerts on the Village Green and the farmer's market and shopping and dining downtown. Adding another pedestrian-friendly area to our current downtown allows us to increase opportunities for more experiences like these, increasing our desirability as a community and adding to our residents' well-being. To maximize the impact of our tax dollars, I continue to stay in close contact with our Union County Commissioners and the Governor's Office to ensure they understand the needs of our municipality and provide as much assistance as possible. In 2021, the county commissioners delivered a budget that was flat for the second year in a row, and for that, we are very grateful. This demonstrated their understanding of the impact of the pandemic on municipalities. Conveying an understanding that cities like Summit cannot continue to pay exorbitant taxes to the county, we received $528,000 in grants from Union County and the state. Maintaining an informed dialogue with county commissioners and state representatives is crucial to our cooperative relationship. Communications. Establishing solid community connections remains a major priority for me as mayor. In 2021, messaging continued to play a crucial role in our continued work to guide Summit's pandemic response. The city of Summit Communications Office has been delivering weekly and monthly updates on COVID-19 cases, which we received locally from the Westfield Regional Health Department, along with information on actions taken by federal, state, and local governments. Daily, they provide residents and business owners with information on changing guidelines, programs, recommendations, and testing. This continues to require hours of searching county, state, and federal websites to verify and clarify all information before it is distributed to the public as quickly as possible. It has been our mission to keep you informed through website postings and notifications, social media channels, and media outreach, distributing more than 2,500 robust and thorough general and emergency communications to the members of the media and the public in 2021. At the recent New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference in November, Summit was asked to participate on an expert panel discussing effective communications during the COVID-19 crisis. Our content was lauded as some of the best in the state, and I wholeheartedly agree. If you have not already done so, go to the city website and sign up to receive email or text notifications. It really is a highly effective way to stay connected and receive the information you need during these both normal and uncertain times. Traffic on our website continues to exceed an average of 30,000 Traffic on our website continues to exceed an average of 30,000 visits a month, with our COVID-19 page receiving the most traffic in these past two years. The City of Summit actively posts on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram with three to four posts a day. We continue to expand our social media followers, growing Facebook followers to 8,337 with 448 new followers in 2021. Interactions on Twitter increased to 100,400 people reached, with 302,000 tweet impressions on the past year. On Instagram, followers grew to 4,300 with daily postings reaching between 3,000 and 6,000 followers. Our video capability and YouTube channel have been an asset, with 215 new subscribers this year, generating 4,723 hours of watch time. Please like and follow the City of Summit on social media. There is so much current information you can find there, and if you have another idea about how we can better reach you with information, we would like to hear it. Please email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. I look forward to continuing office hours at City Hall, meet the mayor events on weekends, and meetings by appointment. I appreciate you taking the time to share your ideas and concerns with me in person and by email and telephone. As a city, our strength lies in our ability to define our priorities and work together to make them a reality. To do that, we need to be informed citizens, and we need to be able to share our ideas, experiences, and skills. At the end of this speech, I typically thank the many volunteers who step forward to help do the hard work to shape our city's priorities and progress. We could not be the city we are without them. I want to encourage anyone with an interest in this work to reach out to me or to the office of the city clerk. Parking. While the commuter parking situation in town has not returned to its pre-pandemic levels, the number of people that park in town has certainly increased. The city removed the DeForest Avenue parking lot gates in the fall because they needed to be replaced and would have cost $750,000, money that council did not feel was worthwhile. Parking patrons now pay for parking at the corner kiosks or by using Park Mobile. The gates were never a favorite of many residents, but they did enforce payment. We are now relying upon an honor code as well as parking enforcers. The Department of Community Services. One of the most important responsibilities of the city is to maintain and improve its infrastructure, crucial to resident safety and public health. I am proud to report that members of the Department of Community Services, despite the immense challenges of the pandemic, continue to provide the services that residents and business owners expect. I thank them for their dedication this past year. The Engineering Department repaved and installed sidewalks on Butler Parkway and Pine Grove Avenue. The cost of the Pine Grove Avenue project was covered by a $530,000 grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. The DPW micropaved 13 streets for a total of 38,000 square yards. In addition, West End Avenue, Edgar Street, Westminster Road, portions of Locust Drive, Upper Blackburn Place, and a portion of Manor Hill Road were repaved. While it might seem mundane, it is imperative to maintain our underground infrastructure. To that end, the department performed 27,000 linear feet of storm and sanitary video inspections, allowing them to assess areas in need of repair in advance of any malfunctions. In addition to repaving and to address pedestrian safety issues, Butler Parkway was narrowed with shoulder striping and raised intersections. Also, pedestrian-activated flashing beacons were installed at intersections of Summit Avenue and Union Place, and Maple Street, and Railroad Avenue. DCS completed the design and accepted bids for the long-overdue municipal golf course dam project. They also responded to over 1,000 calls from residents, contractors, and real estate agents. During Hurricane Ida, the department responded to more than 50 calls about flooding from residents. The city received $470,000 in funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for improvements to Prospect Street. And lastly, because of the strong business activity in DCS and the Construction Office, total revenues increased approximately 94% compared to November of 2020. In October 2016, the city executed an agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center to settle litigation between the city and Fair Share Housing and establish a fair share of the regional need for low and moderate-income housing. The settlement agreement also delineates actions that Summit must take to satisfy its legal requirement of fair share housing. The city began creating and implementing zoning ordinances to support the plan. Progress continued in 2021 with Affordable Housing Initiative, which includes several additional 30-year Affordable Deed restrictions at various locations throughout the city. One new affordable rental unit was occupied and several were rented. More than 1.4 million was spent from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund for Morris Habitat's all-affordable 12-unit housing project at 146 Morris Avenue. The city's Affordable Housing webpage was overhauled and now includes an income qualifying table, an online prequalification form, and new Affordable Housing-specific email address and phone number for easy contact regarding inquiries. As I mentioned earlier, there will be affordable housing apartments in the Broad Street West redevelopment project. Finally, following the retirement of the Summit Housing Authority Director, common council appointed Mark Leckington of Leckington Advisors to oversee our affordable housing process. Environment. Summit residents continue to prioritize a thoughtful stewardship of our environment. The new Summit Free Market Building funded by the Summit Conservancy through generous donations from members of the Summit community is a resounding success. Summit received an award in 2021 from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for excellence in a student-run environmental initiative. We will continue Free Market Days throughout 2022 on the second Saturday of each month under the strong leadership of Summit High School volunteers. Also, the Virtual Summit Free Market Group on Facebook, created in 2020, currently has nearly 4,000 members. This is yet another way to share items and keep reusable materials out of the waste stream, all done in a socially distant manner. The Environmental Commission has embarked on a tiny forest project in the area behind the community center. The idea is to reforest the section of land with native plants and trees, establishing a healthy, albeit small, ecosystem for vegetation and animals to thrive. New Jersey American Water donated $10,000 to the project. The city has also been negotiating with New Jersey Transit to build a new bike shelter on the east side of the Summit train station. With a $40,000 gift from the Summit Conservancy that secures naming rights for the shelter, the project will now be completed in 2022. In this speech last year, I said that Summit's greatest asset is its people, and that was never truer than in 2021. Tonight, we recognize the many men and women who have volunteered on various boards and committees. They are all committed to making Summit the best that it can be, and their hours of service are invaluable. We are fortunate to have community members who have tremendous talent and are willing to share their expertise. I also want to thank our paid professionals, the truly superb men and women who work for the city. They did not hesitate to assist Summit residents and business owners throughout the many challenges of this past year, and I am confident they will maintain that excellent work ethic through 2022. We live in a world where trust is in short supply, but I do not find that to be the case in Summit. We receive thousands of requests for assistance and/or improvements from residents and business owners, and our dedicated city staff responds with professionalism and integrity. These requests come to us because people believe that we will help them, and they trust because sworn and civilian municipal employees work hard and take pride in their jobs and in our city. We truly all work together. Despite our diversity and despite sometimes our differences, we all work together. So I am proud to be your mayor for yet another year, and I look forward to the year ahead. Thank you, God bless, and I wish everyone a happy and healthy 2022.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, as the mayor is making her way back up onto the dais, I'd like to just welcome some of our dignitaries. First of all, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Beth Little, who has joined us on Zoom. She joined just prior to the vote on the President Pro Tem. In addition, we have with us tonight, let's see, we have County Commissioner Sergio Granadas. We have local Democratic City Committee Chair Andrea Stein. We have our city administrator, Michael Rogers, as well as our city department heads. And we have John Staunton, who is the chair from the Board of Health. In addition, Nancy Munoz, our Assemblywoman, was here for the swearing-in, as was Republican City Committee Chair Stephen Spur. And if I've missed any other dignitaries, my apologies. I've done my best scan of the room here. So with that, we're on to ceremonial awards, and I am going to make my way down to the lectern to say a few words about Councilmember David Naidoo. Councilmember Naidoo, would you like to come up and join me?
So on behalf of the mayor and council, it is my honor and privilege to present this map over here to our friend and colleague, David Naidoo. While for many years, the custom has been to present each departing member of council with a chair, David rarely has been constrained by custom, so thus, we're presenting him with a map. It's a map of Summit, so it's relevant. So anyway, David and I first met in 2005 when we were appointed to the Environmental Commission. We were tasked with representing the commission in discussions about installing gates in the DeForest parking lots. In one very spirited meeting with city staff, it became clear to me that David, in his opposition to the gates, was a formidable advocate for city residents and for causes he believed in. David continued his service to the city on the planning board and then was elected to council in 2015, serving two terms. David has an excellent ability to advocate for the needs of the community and to communicate complex issues to the public. He always has a laser focus on what's important to Summit residents and how Summit's government can deliver. In his two years as council president, David introduced several changes to procedures that make council's actions more transparent, including council president agenda previews and council-on-the-road meetings. David's involvement, first on the planning board and then on council, has also shaped land use planning and preserved the environment here in Summit. David was an active member of the Planning Board Subcommittee that put together the Master Plan Re-Examen. As the council president, he guided council through the start of the Broad Street West redevelopment process and the planning of the new fire headquarters. David has always been willing to roll up his sleeves and work through complicated issues. His persuasiveness and attention to detail allowed the city to move forward in cooperation with the Summit Conservancy with the construction of the Free Market Building. He also hammered out an agreement between the city and the Parkline Foundation to allow the Parkline project to go forward and created a process to actively involve residents in the planning of that project. And just a few weeks ago, council approved an agreement that David brokered with the Summit Conservancy to complete the funding of the bike shelter at the Summit train station. These projects happened in large part because of David's hard work and persistence, and for that, we thank him. As chair of the Administrative Procedures Committee for the past two years, David never shied away from taking on tough issues. He was my go-to guy. When there was a problem that needed to be solved, it went to the admin committee. He took on issues such as formulating marijuana policy, improving the reliability of our power system in cooperation with JCPL, and developing procedures for remote meetings when the pandemic began. Summit is a better community because of David's service, and we owe him great thanks. David, I know you're already filling your time up with many new volunteer positions outside of city government, and we look forward to working with you in a different capacity, and I look forward to seeing all that you accomplish, and thank you again.
I promised to be brief, and I would be briefer if I kept my notes with me, so I will completely wing it. No, that's all right. And I do these things off the cuff anyway. So Marjorie referenced that meeting. Amy Karen, who's sitting here, I think was also at the meeting when she was chair of the Environmental Commission. So I go a long way with some of these folks. So let me just thank a couple of people. I thank the members of council, the mayor, the city staff, back in December 14th, for basically the collaboration, the hard work. The way that we do things here is really a sense of it's never one person, one idea, but rather to reach a consensus among us, and it could not be possible without people who are willing to compromise, people who are willing to discuss, and people who are willing to see issues in different ways. And I commend not only this council but also all the previous members of council that I served with. Second, I want to thank my family, which I really didn't have a chance to do at the December 14th meeting because they weren't here. I think anyone that knows me and knows my family knows the fact that my election and my service in this town has only been possible, absolutely without a doubt, because of the hard work, the dedication, and the input of my wife Andrea and my sons, Ravi and Karen. These guys were with me when we first started, when my sons were 10 and seven, and they walked, they biked. My wife was my co-campaign manager. Nothing that I have accomplished was possible, whether in service to government or since I have known my wife or my sons, without their love and support. So it is not possible to say too much more about that. And third, let me thank the community here in Summit for giving me the opportunity to serve. This is an extremely special community. People opened their hearts and their ideas to me. They opened their houses, people who I'd never known. People were willing to walk with me. People were willing to write letters. I had a lot of the people that ever helped me I had never met before that were willing to do it. I am so eternally grateful to them. I came to this country at the age of seven from India. I could not, I assure you, ever imagine that I would be standing here saying these words to you. It is beyond comprehension to my parents, who came here as immigrants, that this is what their son would be able to do, and for that, I am truly grateful. And finally, I want to congratulate my friends, Lisa, Andy, Beth, and Greg, on their election, reelection to council. It is a tough time to serve in government, whether it is on this level, the county level, the state level, or the federal government level. This is not only the challenges of the pandemic, but now we have entered a society where it is very difficult for people to govern. But through compromise, through the ability to listen, and through the ability to work with each other in good faith, and I have complete trust in these folks that they are going to do that, we as Summit will continue to be the great town we are. So thank you very much.
Okay, so the mayor and I are now going to head down to the podium to do the volunteer awards. Well, this cold and frigid night, we're not actually sure how many folks who are receiving awards are here, but we'll read out the names. I think the answer is very few, but if you hear your name read, you can also pick up your bowl at City Hall anytime up through sometime this spring. You'll be receiving notice about that. So with that, as the mayor did say, volunteers are one of the things that makes Summit very special. We have a number of, so, you know, we're always thankful when people are willing to give their time and talents to us. So these are people who are stepping off of committees and commissions. So we have, first of all, from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, we have a founding member, Jonathan Betts, who was the chair for the first two years of the committee, who is stepping down. Jeff Schaefer, who is also one of the original members of the committee. We've got Richard Wallach, who is stepping off of the Lackawanna Coalition. James Cadronell. James Cadronell, who's stepping off the Parking Advisory Committee. Alexandra Ketchison is retiring from the Recycling Advisory Committee. One of our student members, Marcus Goken, has graduated and has left the Recycling Advisory Committee as well. Stephen Pardee has retired from the Summit Parking Advisory Committee after a very, very long stay on the committee with a lot of contributions to the committee. We have a number of people from the Transfer Station Task Force. Adam Zucker, Christopher Harrison, Jack Hellings, Trish Casson, and Rob Friedrich. And that committee was wrapped up because the work was completed. So we thank all of them for their service. Catherine Schwartzstein is stepping off the zoning board. And I believe I have one other one, which is Matthew Kurson, who is the Transportation Advisory Committee down at the bottom, who's also stepping off. And with that, I'll turn the rest over to the mayor.
Okay, these are appointments that are made by the mayor. So the first is Katie Tottman, who is leaving the Arts Committee, along with Ray Merritt and Taylor Kendra. The two people who have stepped away from the Board of Education are Josh Weinrich and Peggy Wong. Andy Smith has stepped off the Community Programs Advisory Board. Alyssa Spur has stepped off the Environmental Commission. Norma Schroeder is finishing her term of the Library Board of Trustees. And then we have several members of the PAL who are leaving. Bill Kine, David Levitt, Richard Michelle, and Terry Armstrong. Bob Ashman is stepping away from his term on the planning board. Mitchell Horn and Walter Gonzalez are both leaving the Rent Commission. And David Zeligowski from the Technology Advisory Committee, as well as Justin Joffe. All of these folks put in a lot of work, and we are very, very grateful for their service.
So we are now moving on to the announcement of 2022 volunteer appointments, as well as council standing committees and board liaisons. All that information can be found in the packet that's on the city's website. The agenda packet and everything will be posted tomorrow as well. We had a number of very qualified applications, and if you were not selected, we'll keep your application on file for future openings, because positions do open up. So please keep in touch with us. Please continue to send in those applications, because we're always looking to fill spots. So with that, is there anything else you'd like to add, Madam Mayor?
No, I don't think so, not at the moment.
Okay. And now, we are on to the consent agenda. So unless anyone has anything specific that they would like to discuss, I'll seek a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Well, wait, we've got, come on up, Reverend Harriel.
This is not something that I had planned to do, but I remember what Mayor Radus told me back in March of 2021, when she and the common council surprised me by giving me the Volunteer of the Year Award. She said that she brought the plaque, not the plaque, but the certificate by my home because of the COVID pandemic. But she told me, she said, "We regret that we could not present this to you in person." And I said, "Well, it is honored to receive." She said, "But at the first council meeting that you were able to be at, we want to recognize you." So this is the first one. So please recognize me.
Reverend Harriel, you are so important to this entire community. I wasn't sure who was doing the invocation. When I saw you tonight, I could not have been happier. All of your service, not just your parish, your community, to the entire community. And all that we went through in your certificate, all the many boards and committees that you've served on to help our community. You are the heart, the voice, the soul of our community, and we are very, very grateful to everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. We appreciate it. I'm not being funny, you know. You are the conscience of this community.
Thank you.
So thank you for everything you do. So now, Councilmember Little, I just want to make sure that you can hear us.
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. So I'm now going to take a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we're moving on slightly out of order,